Do we have our stenographer?
We gotta pull up from the other side.
Oh, I'm sorry.
George is here.
Good. All right, I guess.
We just need the court reporter.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. So as soon as she shows up, we'll start. Good evening, George.
Ronda Reinstein, I think is the court reporter. Claudia.
What's the name again?
Ronda. It says CCR, Ronda Reinstein.
There she is.
Ronda, can you hear us?
Yes, thank you for letting me in. I am the court reporter.
Okay, great, thank you.
Claudia, remind me what I need to do so that I can see both groups. So that I can help you with that.
Just view the participants. At the bottom left.
Yeah, thank you. It was clicking all around it, but not getting it, so.
Excuse me, may I ask, are there professionals on the meeting? Mr. Bridgers is zoning officer.
Yeah, and I'm the attorney, Ronda, Karen Casey.
Hi, are a planner or an engineer?
Not for the board, no.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Ronda, are you ready?
Yes, I am.
Okay, good, all right, let's begin. This is the regular meeting of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment, being held electronically via Zoom on July 28th, 2021 at 7:30 PM. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place for this meeting has been given by prominently posting the Sunshine Notice of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment. Such notice has been placed on the official bulletin board at the municipal complex and by transmitting a copy of the notice to the Princeton Packet Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, and by filing a copy with the Clerk of Princeton on July 23rd, 2021. And has been posted to the municipal website, www.pristin nj.gov. Pursuant to Executive Order 107, due to the state of emergency in New Jersey regarding COVID-19 coronavirus, notice that during the declared state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet Town Topics and The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on the 24th day of April 2020. Such notices have been placed on the official bulletin board of the Princeton Municipal Complex and on the Princeton website, and ought to be maintained throughout the year. And by transmitting a copy of same to the Princeton Packet Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, Comcast Media, and by filing a copy thereof with the Clerk of Princeton, notices have been placed on all window doors of the municipal complex. Claudia, can you call the roll?
Ms. Coulson, here. Mr. Davich.
Here.
Mr. Floyd.
Here.
Mrs. Striver. Mr. Tendamone.
Here.
Cohen.
Here.
Chen.
Here.
Mr. Stein.
Here.
Ms. Donna.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. We have two meeting minutes to approve. The first is September 23rd, 2020. They were included, I believe, within your packet of information that you received. Does anybody have any comments or failing that? Would someone like to make motion?
I'll move it. I'll move approval of the minutes of September 23rd.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
All seconded.
Okay.
Are you, Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
German Cohen.
Yes. Okay, we also have minutes from October 28th, 2020. Again, included in your packet, if there are no comments on them, if somebody would like to make a motion.
I'll move to accept.
Okay, thank you. Second, anyone?
Second, Floyd.
Coulson?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Davich, you were not here.
No, see that.
So Mr. Floyd moves?
Yes, I'll move.
All right, I'll second it. I'll second it.
So Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
German Cohen.
Yes. Okay, we have three resolutions for this evening. The first is 176 Edgerstone, case number Z This is Block 9303, Lot 1, in the R2 Zone. Does anyone have any comments on the resolution? And if not, if someone would like to make a motion?
Board members, I just wanted to correct on page four the numbered paragraphs, let's say 10 and 11, they actually should be numbered 7 and 8. That was just a numbering glitch.
Thank you. Other comments? Someone like to make a motion?
I'll move. Stein, move.
Okay. Thanks, George. Second, anyone?
I'll second it, Floyd.
Thank you. Okay, Claudia?
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Floyd?
Yes.
Chen?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
German Cohen?
Yes. Okay.
Claudia, did you also get Ms. Deanna? I think she, yes?
Oh, yes, she voted that day, I'm sorry.
Okay, great.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, the next case, the next resolution is Z 20-920, 270 Lambert Drive, Block 8101, Lot 22.
Board members, I had asked Claudia to circulate to you a revised draft today. There were some changes on it that were suggested by the applicant's attorney. They all make sense and are consistent with the record, and I also shared this draft with Mr. Evans, the next-door neighbor, who participated, as you remember, in the hearing. And you'll see the changes highlighted in yellow. Paragraph 5 on the first page, but basically what we're doing is indicating that the setback on the left side yard, it's 9.3 feet at its closest point to the setback line, and that is correct. In paragraphs 8 in the findings, and also in the conclusions. The applicant suggested, instead of using the word mature plantings, because remember, the applicant is going to put plantings on either or both sides of the common property line, instead suggested taking out mature, and it's clear that when these plants are planted, at that time, they must be of sufficient height to provide the needed buffering and to obstruct totally the view from the deck and also from the second floor of the Evans residence. So this language, I think, is beneficial to Mr. Evans, and as I said, he did get a draft of it, and he advised me that this was acceptable.
Okay. Any questions?
Yeah, I do have one question, Karen.
Yep.
And I'm glad, you know, Mr. Evans is fine with this. One thing that Weiss, Mr. Weiss represented to us and to Mr. Evans, that Mr. Evans said, "Take it out tomorrow," he'd take it out. Is that something that doesn't need, doesn't need to be, or we didn't condition that?
Well, Michael, my understanding, when Mr. Weiss said that, I think what he said was, "If the board didn't approve it," then, at least that's my recollection, he said, "I'm willing to remove it." No, I understand, I out. Willing to, but my understanding is, with these conditions now, and these are things, you know, Mr. Evans said were acceptable to him, my understanding is, based on that now, it could stay as conditioned in the resolution. Now, I know, I believe Mr. Petrino's here tonight, I'm not, do you see him, Claudia, or Eve? Because he had asked me, said he was going to attend. I don't know.
I don't see him in participant attendees.
I don't either.
Okay. Well, that's my recollection of what Mr. Weiss's testimony was. I didn't understand him to say that now that all these conditions were created, he'd still be willing to remove it tomorrow. That's not my recollection, but.
Yeah, I had, I had the different recollection, especially when they were discussing his daughter's window.
Right.
And he kind of said, yeah, my recollection is, he said to us and to Evans, "Listen, I'll take it out if there's any problem." But that was my question.
Okay. Well, I didn't put, I didn't include that because that was not my recollection of the testimony. What, does the board, do other board members have a comment on that? Do they have?
Yeah, I thought with the conditions agreed to with the trees as the screening, that he he had stated that he was willing to do that, but once they came to an agreement about what conditions were acceptable, then that was the agreement, not that he still had the option. The Evans still had an option to ask for it to be taken down.
I don't think he took it back, though, which is interesting. I don't know, it's just, I feel like I remember I feel like I remember the same thing, kind of as a throwaway line, well, I would just take it out if he really wanted it. I mean, I don't know if we should take that, how seriously we should take that, but I guess we could, we could clarify it by somebody looking at the video and seeing.
I mean, I remember what both Eve and Bernice and Michael said, that he, he said, "If there was a problem, I would just take it out," but I almost, it was almost like a flippant statement as he was discussing the situation, and then I think there was ample time as we spent like a half hour on the conditions to make a, you know, specific condition, if he wanted it out at any time, I think he had the chance to bring that up, so I, I mean, I think the conditions, it's a good point you made, Michael, but I'm not sure, I think it kind of, it didn't follow through to the last part of the hearing where we went into deliberation, so, I mean, that's my remembrance.
Well, Mr. Evans has seen the resolution, so he's fine with it.
I, okay.
I move approval of it, if you're looking for a motion.
Yes, please.
Yeah, I move approval.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you.
Coulson?
Yes.
Floyd?
Yes.
Chen?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
German Cohen?
Yes.
Claudia, did you get Michael Floyd, or maybe I missed that?
I think I did, Mr. Floyd.
Okay, great, great, all right, and I didn't hear it, okay.
Okay, our next resolution is case number Z 21-025, 174 Springdale Road, Block 10,602, Lot 10. Are there any questions regarding this resolution? If not, someone like to make a motion?
I'll move approval.
Thank you. Second, anyone?
Sure, I'll second it.
Thank you. Claudia?
Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Chen?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Claudia, you still with us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes. Did you call my name? I didn't hear.
You abstained from the, I have in the note that you abstained?
Yeah, you did.
I did, that's true.
Yep.
You're right. Sorry.
That's okay.
Okay. All right, I was in error, we have four resolutions tonight. Last one is Z 21-037, 44 Nassau Street, Block 26, 20.03, Lot 87.
You say 44, it's 46.
It's 46.
Thank you.
I'll move to approve.
Okay. Second, anyone?
Second.
Coulson?
Yes.
Floyd?
Yes.
Yes.
Stein? Donna?
Yes.
German Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. We have three hearings tonight, one of which, 42 Chestnut will be carried, but I, I think we should take, Karen, we take jurisdiction of this?
Steve, excuse me. 269 South Harrison, that's the one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That would be carried.
I'm sorry. That's right, it's 269 South Harrison, case Z 21-040. And that's Block 11,002, Lot 51. They want to carry that till the next, till the August hearing, Derek?
Yes, sir, I believe so.
And I guess we take jurisdiction this evening? We're careful.
Yes, the noticing is in order, you can tonight, and then carry it.
Okay, so if anybody is listening in for 269 South Harrison, that will be heard at our August meeting.
25th of August, just for the.
25th of August, okay, good.
Thank you.
You won't, okay, so now, the first application on the agenda is case Z 21-006, 44 Wheat Shift Lane, Block 7601, Lot 23. This was re-submittal of an earlier application. Do we have everybody here for that hearing? I see David Smith is here. Is the attorney here? Are the applicants here? Up, they're coming up by the second here. Okay. Is there someone who's going to speak on behalf of the applicant?
Richard Chatsman, attorney, for the applicant, we were asked to make revisions to the plans, eliminate the side yard variances, and also eliminate another variance. So in order to wrap things up, we have the three witnesses from the June meeting and the May meeting. Ralph Finelli, the architect, will explain how the plans were changed. David Schmidt will go over briefly the engineering changes, and the planner will give a recap of his testimony very briefly and explain why this new plan is less of a more of a reason to grant a C2 variance, C1 variance, and less of a substantial detriment to his own plan, master plan, and general welfare. Mr. Schmidt was the engineer, Mr. Finelli was the architect, Mr. McDonough was the planner, they're previously sworn and previously qualified, like to, like the record to reflect that. And without, I note also that Mr. Stein and Ms. Chen were not here for the June meeting, have they, are they eligible now? They read the, or looked at the June meeting and had filed a written certification in the record for, for that, so they're eligible, or what's their status?
Claudia?
Hello?
I don't believe they have reviewed the record, but I'll let them speak for themselves.
Yeah, I did, I did not see the video for that.
Okay. So.
So did not see the video.
Okay.
So Ms. Chen and Mr. Stein therefore not eligible. Take, of course, if they want, but they're not eligible to vote. Okay, Mr. Finelli?
Wait, well, hang on one second, hang, excuse me.
I'm sorry to interrupt, this is the court, who is speaking, the attorney, I didn't catch his name.
SCHATZMAN, Richard.
Thank you.
Derek, I should have asked you, would you like to read your memo on this re-submittal?
Sure, thank you.
Mr. Bridger, I'll just swear you in for the evening, do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, ma'am, I do, thank you.
Thank you.
This application was initially heard at the June 23rd meeting. Since that meeting, they have revised the plans, as the attorney has stated, the architectural designs have been revised to eliminate the two side yard setback variances. Both side yard setbacks now comply with the required 15-foot side yard setback requirement. There's a reduction in the floor area from 3,329.97 square feet to 3,249.01 square feet, or roughly a reduction of 74 square feet. And the impervious coverage has been reduced from the previous proposal of 2,819 square feet to 2,660 square feet. And the proposed impervious is less than the existing impervious of 27,779 square feet. The remaining variances are lot width, requirements on 100, existing is 75, frontage requirements 100, existing is 75. A lot area requirement of, is 21,780 square feet, the existing is 11,175. The carport setback remains the same, it should be set 16 feet behind the front of the facade, the nearest portion. It's set 13 feet in front of the facade, and the height to setback, there's still one remaining height to setback, I think there were two at the last reiteration of the plan, it requires one to one, and now the proposed is one to 1.3, I believe.
Um, at the okay, at the, at the last hearing, you, I believe, Mr. Schatzman, you testified that the applicant was not able to acquire any additional land?
Correct, he testified to that effect.
Okay. All right. Okay, I guess if anybody, the board members have any questions on Mr. Bridger's memo, if not, Mr. Schatzman, present your case.
I think I heard, and if I'm wrong, then I'm wrong, but I thought I heard Mr. Bridger say impervious coverage 27,000, which I think just was a.
Yes. He corrected that, it was 2,779 or something.
Right.
Yeah.
Been reduced.
Okay.
Mr. Finelli, you want to explain what the architectural plans changes are?
Sure, is it okay to share my screen?
Sure.
Sure.
Okay, so what we're, as we had mentioned at the introduction, our last go-around, our first presentation of this, the building was wider by six feet. There were some other things that went along with that, the height to setback ratio, and obviously, just the standard of the bulk side yards was both too close to the property line. At our meeting and testimony in response to the board, the board was, was pretty direct in talking about the history of these pre-existing non-conforming lots, and sort of a given that we would, or that an applicant would conform to the side yard. So the primary thing that we needed to do in coming back to you was to bring this, the side yards to 15 feet on either side. So if you recall, the existing building has side yard setbacks of nine feet and four feet. We have now greatly increased the side yard setbacks and brought this into conformity. The building has 15-foot side yards on both the left and the right. You might recall that initially, there was a sort of little bump out over here in the kitchen area. What we have done really is to just, you know, skinny this up a little bit, we added a little square footage in the front to take up some of the utility spaces. But essentially, the floor plan remains the same, the room arrangement, the room relationship really remain the same. That dimensional setback issue really was only on the first floor. Again, in the very first of our presentation, we had described a lot at the house design, that the lower level would be parallel with the road, maximize glass in the back of the house and the view. The second floor, in deference to the height to setback ratio, was really sort of oriented perpendicularly to the road. So there was very little movement on the second floor plan, really just kind of moved the stairwell over, you know, just, just a bit because of the first floor changes. So really, all of the first floor changes can be summed up just by looking at this number. We've brought that building into conformity. The, I'm just going to go to the elevations, pretty, should be a pretty brief explanation as well. I think that, you know, the front elevation is probably the best illustrator of what's going on, the building. The building is just a little bit less wide, less wide by six feet, really. What you're looking at then is the carports, you're really looking under and through the carport. Doors into a storage area, the main entrance door. And as you recall from the floor plans, the second floor projects forward of the first floor. The rear elevation, again, a little bit narrower, but as we talked about maximizing the glass along along that view, you can see quite a bit of glass along there. And really, the left and right side elevations really very similar to what you saw last time. Combination of a couple of different materials and really more open glazing instead of the double hung, small pane windows. The style of the house is very much the same as as what we did. It is the same as what we proposed the first time around. The big difference was in the in taking some of the width out of the building. Mr. Bridger also recited the F A R to you and again, just for just for calculation sake, this is how the building breaks down. And and as you can see, our F A R is below the the point three zero that's allowed by the code. And that's a combination of living space as well as just the covered spaces like the carport and the covered entrance. The last page in our submission is the height to setback ratio drawing. And again, as Mr. Bridger recited to you, we've been able to bring bring that really into conformance. The primary elevation, the front elevation, you can see this blue line represents the grade line at the at the front property. There is the one to one ratio, and you can see that we're within the one to one ratio on both sides of the building. The the rear, again, it was mentioned, we still had two minor infractions of that ratio, and it's really a function of the of the grade as it goes farther back. But you can see on the from the street, this would be the left side. So at the very rear corner of the building, that ratio is one point one three to one rather than the one point one that is that is allowed. On the opposite side, again, it's really, it's really the same. The grade at that point is ninety six feet and using the same ratio. We've clipped that little corner, so the ratio there is one point one three to one. And just to illustrate, you know, what that means and 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 how it's visible. You know, this is the side yard setback. Pardon me for a second. So the the same corner we were talking about being clipped is is this little corner of the building. So, you know, and that flat plain view from the rear of the property, this is the corner we're talking about. You can see it's, you know, seventy five or eighty feet off of that back property. So it's really, it's really something that is not going to be perceived or noticed, I believe, in any way, shape, or form. On the other side of the property, again, there is the one to one ratio that's required of the rear property line. And there is that same little corner that's being clipped. So again, so that was the primary task that that we were given was to reduce the width of this, to bring the side yard setbacks into compliance. We've done that. In so doing, we've reduced the square footage a little bit, which in turn reduced the F A R a little bit, which in turn reduced the impervious coverage a little bit. So so all of those things have been done in a favorable fashion. There were two other things that the board requested we look at. I don't want to ignore them or think that you that we've forgotten them or make you think we've forgotten them. But there was one mention, the board had asked us to consider a green roof as part of stormwater management. We did educate Mr. Scorpion a little bit about what that means, the construction that goes into it, the costs associated with it, the maintenance that's associated with it. And the bottom line really is that we're just not going to pursue that. I think once we also got to the point of recognizing that we had reduced all of those coverage impacts, we felt a lot more comfortable being able to share with the board that that we weren't too excited about going down that path. The second thing that we were asked to look at, and it really wasn't the board's, I don't believe it was the board's concern. I think it was more in response to one or maybe two of the neighbors talking about about scale of the building was to reduce the width of the carport. And we had talked about that. I think we had even gone back and forth with a few numbers in terms of width and and what at minimum we would try and create in terms of of a covered parking space and some storage. And we did pursue that. We did actually share a drawing with Mr. Bridger, who reviewed it for us. And and as it turns out, reducing that carport would have triggered another variance. The property is required to have two parking spaces and with the two car sized carport, we are fully compliant in that regard. So again, considering that we are within all of the other bulk requirements in terms of coverage and F A R, it didn't seem to be logical to create a variance by by reducing a practical aspect of the of the building's function. So those are the two things I I think, to a lesser degree, the board was interested in. Again, primarily reduce the width, bring us into conformance on the side yard setbacks and the height to setback ratios. And that's what we've done. And that's that's pretty much the architectural testimony unless Mr. Schatzman would like me to highlight anything else. I'm more than happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Schatzman, is this the same exhibit that you used at your at the last meeting? Or is this a new drawing Mr. Finelli has prepared? I'm asking to figure out whether we need to make this an additional exhibit.
Have to make it an additional exhibit.
All right. Well, I believe then we're up to A four. And what what how would you like this exhibit labeled?
More plans and elevations and F A R calculation.
Okay.
Karen, do you have any other questions?
No, I don't.
I just have one of Mr. Finelli. I thank you for modifying the plan. I think you did. You did a very nice job. What is the surface material of the covered area in front of the front door?
I'm I'm going to let Mr. Schmidt answer that. We do have the driveway and the carport. I believe we've got some combination of, you know, favors and landscaping there, but I'm going to let him answer that question for you.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, I I do have a question. We're just asking, could could you state for today's record the actual percentage numbers on impervious coverage versus maximum permitted?
Sure, I'm going to defer to Mr. Schmidt also. It's part of his drawing, so you 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 have it and you'll be able to talk about it in just a minute, I'm sure.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further, Mr. Finelli?
No, I'll stop sharing if we're ready to move on.
Okay, Mr. Schmidt.
David Schmidt, DS Engineering, hoping to share a screen. That come up?
There we go.
This is a revised plan. It's the variance plan. It was dated December thirtieth, twenty twenty, revised July first, twenty twenty one.
So we'll make this A five then. Okay, thank you.
This is the plan that was submitted to Derek Bridger and to the board. We got it centered on the screen. As Ralph mentioned, he decreased the size of the building footprint. We now have setback conformance from the side yard and from the front and the rear. In doing so, we minimized the driveway a little bit, and we reduced the impervious surface coverage by a hundred and nineteen square feet. We were forty feet above forty square feet in increase, but with the reduction of the house and the drive, we're now at a reduction. And at the last meeting, we were discussed about adding some additional trees because we did cut down a lot of dead trees. So I'm proposing three trees in the back of the property. They are going to be October glory, or I think the willow will do very well in the rear of the property where the stream is. So I added Z Ss are the willow and then the A R is an October glory. And then I scattered some burning bushes in the back of the property, which is a great screening. It's also very works very well in the in wet areas. So we added that to the board's discretion to help mitigate the what at the time helped mitigate the increase in stormwater runoff. Now we don't have an increase in stormwater runoff as we reduced the impervious surface coverage. In between this meeting and in the one prior, we also submitted to NJDEP because we needed a flood hazard verification and we needed a wetland delineation verification. We received both of them. NJDEP freshwater wetlands permit was obtained. The application number is one 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 four dash twenty one dash zero 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 one point one F W W twenty one zero 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 one. It was issued July first, it's twenty twenty one. That what that verified is these A one, A two, A three, and A four is state open waters. We don't have wetlands, but we do have state open waters. And that was verified by DEP. The second thing was the hundred year floodplain and the flood hazard. I have the flood hazard or the hundred year floodplain in the dash line in the rear of the property, elevation ninety three. Flood hazard is a foot higher, so it's an elevation ninety four. This was verified by NJDEP with a permit file number of one 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 four dash twenty one dash zero 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 one point one L U P twenty one zero 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 one, and that was issued July second, twenty twenty one. As far as your stormwater management, since we don't have an increase, we don't need to do stormwater management and and Derek, Mr. Purcell's not here, but the threshold usually is is four hundred square feet. The question you just raised at the lot coverage. You're allowed. Where is it? Thirty six percent existing was twenty four eighty seven. We are at twenty three point eight percent. So we were well below the maximum lot coverage for this property. Well, the F A R was discussed. So that's pretty much all I have. The drainage patterns have remained the same as I testified earlier. And we removed some of the more more critical variances that you that you pointed out. So I think, you know, we have a solid plan. It's going to fit into the property very, very nice and we have the permits from the state.
Could you answer Mr. Cohen's question that he asked, Mr. Finelli, what's in the front there?
Steve, you were asking about the, is it going to?
Yeah, what happens under the the second floor overhang at the area in front of the front door and now the bathrooms and laundry room?
Well, that would probably be lawn or it's going to be a river stone type material. I mean, I would start with lawn. If the lawn would take, I'd use lawn. If not, I'd go with the river stone.
So I know I'm just wondering. So it's not going to be, it's not going to be landscaped. It's going to be.
Right now I have it as lawn.
Okay, so it's all right. Okay, I mean, it's it's still impervious coverage?
Well, the lawn wouldn't be, but the.
The yeah, the lawn would be pervious, but are you going to get grass to grow up under there?
If if we buy, we think you could. It's you have a ten to twelve foot separation. And sometimes it's each township is different. A colored stone type material for landscaping is not considered impervious because it does allow water through it. Because you're not riding over or driving over, you're not compacting it like a gravel driveway. It's considered to be pervious.
Okay, but you you're not planning on any landscaping under there?
No.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Further questions, Mr. Schmidt?
I don't have any.
And.
Any other questions from the board of Mr. Smith or Finelli? Okay, please move on, Mr. Schatzman.
Okay, Mr. Doherty, you recall that John McDonough was a planner. He was qualified as a planner on May twenty six, but then Mr. McDonough, Mr. Doherty substituted for him on June fifteenth, two thousand twenty one. And he testified briefly at that time, and he was qualified at that time. So Mr. Doherty, you want to just do a recap of your planning testimony very briefly and then relate it to the new plans that are be set before the board now?
Absolutely. If I may, just to give everybody a quick recap here, share the screen. This is the the line question here, block ninety six oh five, lot lot eight. Oh, sorry. This is a lot twenty three, twenty seventy six oh one, lot twenty three. And what we have here before you, just to recap, we have some dimensional variance relief, which, as stated in previous testimony, meets the Gash and Ash tests where, you know, we can't really acquire any more land to be conforming with lot dimensional requirements here. And as just stated previously by my colleagues, the new proposed plan is more in compliance. And essentially, what you have before you today is is two variance release being sought, one for the garage carport location and that height to rear setback ratio. And if I may, just to kind of go over that, you know, in the visuals, we'll see, you know, this is zone. Some of so this was the existing property as it sits now today. And then some of the aerial photos, you'll see the parking arrangements that currently exist with through the neighborhood, which I believe the relief sought for the carport is very much compatible with what exists out there. So to kind of brush into this, the zoning conformance, the use is a permitted use, the floor area is well within the the code allowance. No F A R relief is is being sought. The building height, floor area, setbacks, and coverage all comply. The building height to setback ratios comply for the street and the two side yards, which were previously not in compliance. The parking supply complies with the code and no, no additional parking relief is needed. The zone relief, the application has landed in a spot where it needs very modest, reasonable relief. The only relief is for the heightened setback ratio to the rear and that carport in the front of the dwelling. The other three variants as stated just prior are dimensional and, as I said, have met the legal relief under the National Gas court proceedings. So justification for the other zoning relief, the legal basis for the relief, the remaining relief is very much minor, remains warranted under flexible C balancing test, which is where the benefits have to weigh the detriments. The benefit, as the application as a whole, continue to substantially outweigh the detriments here. The project benefits, all prior testing, as I said before, will carry forward. This is new housing aesthetics and so forth. The application brings a site into in more into conformance with the zone plan. Again, this promotes purposes A, C, G, I, and M of the municipal land use law. The potential impacts, the relief sought is reasonable and as minimal if any impacts. The height to ratio relief is in the rear and in the minimalist two triangles, which are basically unperceivable. It's a one to one ratio. We're seeking a one to one three. The front yard carport is compatible with the neighborhood as these photos will kind of show you what these the neighborhood kind of parking arrangement is. You know, we can kind of see some of the stuff going on, parking in the fronts by the streets, the likes of that. Carports are pretty much at you know, at surface. If not, you know, they're definitely not sixteen feet to the rear of the front building. Some don't have it. So I think this is more in compliance with what's actually manifested throughout the neighborhood here, property right to the left and so forth. So with that being said, the front carport, the front carport is compatible with the neighborhood. So with that being said, the front comp port, the front carport is compatible with the neighborhood. Neither of these deviations will be evident as a variance in, in the public eye. The carports, like I said, exist and that rear height to setback ratio is, like I said, to the rear. Conclusion, the plan has evolved through an interactive process, which is exactly how the course age should go. The statutory criteria for the grant of relief continue to be met and approval is warranted.
Mr. Schatzman, quick question. My understanding is these slides were all part of exhibit A2, which were reviewed with Mr. McDonough. Am I correct? Okay, thank you.
The third time, yeah.
Okay.
If I can just correct one number that Mr. Doherty gave, the height to setback ratio that we're proposing in the back is 1.13 to one.
Right, sorry.
That's okay. Just wanted to point out it's, it's a minor nature. Thank you.
I have no further questions to Mr. Doherty.
Is there any questions? The board have any questions from, of Mr. Doherty? Okay. Mr. Schatzman, continue.
That's it. I mean, I think we've done whatever we can to eliminate all the variances possible, given the lot. I would, I took my, my own view. I took a quick look again at Wheat Shift Lane and I'm willing to bet that this, if this is approved, probably is the most complying lot in the house on Wheat Shift Lane with the new R5 requirements. The variance is denied oddly enough, the house could be refurbished, it's there now, and have more variances, more non-compliances than the new house. So I just leave that as my, my only comment as a lawyer. You heard the testimony of the engineer, the architect and the planner, and that's my, my, my take on it. So other than that, I have nothing further.
Okay. Do any board members have any questions of the applicant or the witnesses before we move to the public portion of the hearing? Okay. Let's open it up to public comment. Eve, do we have anybody who would like to comment? You're muted, Eve.
Okay. Sorry. I was, never mind. Let's see, I'm pretty sure that we do, but I think we may have to move some people over. I don't, if you could, if you hear me, if you're in, if you would like to speak, if you would raise your hand in the... I'm, I'm just looking to see if I can see anybody.
Mrs. Graves is, we can't see you, Mrs. Graves.
Sorry, hang on for a second. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Mrs. Graves, did you testify at the last hearing?
You just muted yourself, Mrs. Graves.
Okay, I'm back.
Okay, Mrs. Graves, did you testify at the last hearing?
I did.
All righty, then you're still under oath and we could just give us your address one more time.
62 Wheat Chief Lane.
All right, thank you.
First of all, I'd just like to say, I really appreciate the changes that have been made. I think it's an important reduction in impervious surface for our street and the issues of stormwater management that we're facing. I'm very disappointed that there is not more kind of interest and uptake, both on the part of the owner and on the part of the board in enforcing a green roof, because I think those really combat some of the issues that we're very concerned about on our street. And, you know, this is really a message more for the board than for Mr. Shorpien and the owner and the, the team that he's assembled to put together this house. But, I mean, as we see from events that have happened recently in Germany and elsewhere, we really need to be very cognizant and very careful about how we make changes and move down this road. Just because it's in line with what's already on the street doesn't mean that it's the right thing to do. So I would just like to say that again, appreciate the changes that have been made. Another request that a green roof be considered despite the cost and despite the upkeep, because that is a, 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 a strategy that's been proven to combat issues with stormwater management. And that's something that's very significant on our street as myself and a number of my neighbors have argued already. And that's really just the, the, the content of my, 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 my contribution to this event and also really something for the board to consider as they go forward, looking at other, other requests, other variances. So thank you.
Yes, just as a comment, Ms. Graves, the green roof is, is, the enforcement or the requirement is not within the ordinance. It would be, if you're very interested in pursuing this, I suggest you talk to the, the council about it or the planning department and they can study that.
Thank you, I understand. I'll take that under advisement, thank you.
Okay. All right, Eve, is there anyone else?
I don't see anyone. I don't either, but I just want to make sure if anybody has, wants to speak, do click on that little symbol at the bottom with the hand raised, just to let, just to be sure. We don't want to miss anyone. But I agree with you, Claudia, I don't see anybody who's signaling that they want to speak.
Okay. Hearing?
Wait, wait, one second, I got somebody.
Yeah. I see the same thing. Winnie Hughes Spar. If you could unmute yourself, please.
I have, have I unmuted?
You have.
Okay.
Wait, wait, here we go. Okay. Ms. Hughes, we can't see you though. Can you turn on your video?
I did, I clicked on it.
Hmm, okay.
All right, let me see. Oh, hold on, hold on.
There you are.
Yeah, there I am. Okay, yes. My name is Winifred Hughes Spar. And I clicked everything all, I clicked everything all wrong last time, so I didn't get to speak. So I just, two seconds.
If you could give us your address, please.
I live at 50 Wheat Chief Lane, which is next door to 44.
All righty, and we'll just swear you in. Do you swear a firm? Any testimony you give this evening will be truthful.
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Okay. I have lived at 50 Wheat Chief Lane since 1984. And I've never had any problems with flooding until the year 2010. Since then, my basement furnace room has been seriously flooded with damage to the furnace three times. And this is not by overflow from Harry's Brook, but by groundwater seepage, which is caused by oversaturated ground. And this, of course, in turn is caused by the increase in impervious surfaces since, you know, recently, 1984 to 2010, I had no problems. So I just wanted to bring up the point that it's not just overflow from Harry's Brook. I have a steep slope in the back and so does 44, has a fairly steep slope. The, the water from the Brook never comes up to our properties. So 44 is not going to have a problem and I have not had a problem. But this groundwater seepage problem has come up with these big storms in recent years and with more coverage of impervious surfaces. So I just wanted to bring that in, that it's, it's not just, people had wonderful videos of, of, of the raging Harry's Brook, which I see from my windows also. But there is a lot of problem with ground. I was told when, when I had to get this mess fixed three times, that it was groundwater seepage from oversaturated ground. So this is another consideration. And I also did want to just say that, you know, if there's some way for, I mean, we talked last time about how there were no precedents, but I think there are certain expectations and if there's some way for things to be not left so that every single time there's a new building, the whole neighborhood has to start litigating all over again. And in front of two different boards, your board never heard everything that was done about the house built at the, at the end of the lane. So I think it would make the situation fairer for both the neighbors and for the buyers who perhaps don't know what kind of a kettle of fish they're getting into. So thank you. The main thing I wanted to bring up, and I applaud Sophie Glavier's testimony last time, is the, the groundwater seepage, even if you're not affected by the Brook itself flooding your property, that has become a serious problem for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Eve? Claudia?
Claudia, I don't. I don't see anybody.
I don't either.
Okay. Hearing no one else from the public, I'll close the public portion of the hearing and we can go into executive, to executive session and discuss this application. Comments from the board? Anyone?
I, for one, am grateful that they took the time to listen to what we had said and make some adjustments to try and, and make this more palatable.
Yes. I, I agree with you, Harlan. I think, I think they did a good job in bringing this into conformance and I think it'll, it'll fit well within the streetscape and, and I'm pleased with the slight reduction in impervious coverage. So, and I'm not concerned, quite frankly. I believe that the height to setback ratio of one to, 1.1 to 1.3 is de minimis and I don't have a problem with that. Okay, anyone else like to make a comment?
Yeah, I, I also appreciate that some, some significant changes were made and I, and I, as well, I appreciate those from the neighborhood who brought up important points, even if they are things that we're not in a position of enforcing. And I, I actually feel like even if this house weren't built, this, the, the groundwater issue would still be an issue. So it's good for us to know about it and it's really, I really urge anyone who cares about it to, to, you know, as was said, to go to council members and, and see if something can be, you know, if there are reasonable changes that could be made at that, in that venue, so.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, if there are no more comments, if someone would like to make a motion? Anyone? Someone? Mr. Floyd? You're muted, Michael. Okay, thanks.
Donna's trying to speak, but we can't hear her. I'm not trying to interrupt you, Michael, but maybe I'm wrong.
Ooh, it's French.
Only a motion to?
But maybe I'm wrong. I, I.
I said I would make a motion to group.
I'm sorry, Mr. Floyd, I, I didn't mean to.
No, no, I wasn't, I'm fine, thanks.
We're getting a lot of feedback from someone here.
Yeah, I can't, I can't hear Donna. Can anybody hear Donna?
No, Donna, can you, can you hear us? Donna? She doesn't seem to be moving.
She's frozen.
Frozen.
Yeah, and there were problems last week, but, I mean, last meeting with, with her, her transmission.
Yeah.
Well, it's saying bandwidth, I saw a signal or something that said bandwidth is low, but...
Yeah, Donna, oh, there we go. Donna, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can. Actually, I'm, I'm not trying.
We can't hear you, you're bringing up.
And, and the video is not working. You can't see.
Mr. Floyd is in a better position to make a motion.
So.
I can, yeah.
Wait, wait.
Yes.
Donna, your audio connection is very bad.
You might want to just phone in directly.
Yeah, I was going to say, maybe if you could phone in, because I don't see your video either now.
Yeah, you're not moving.
Yeah, but at least we could hear her.
Did she vote by a show of hands?
Maybe I will leave and...
Doesn't appear to be working. All right, I think.
Well, if we can't hear Donna and we can't see her, this is going to be a problem, I think, for her voting, because we've got two more applications tonight, so. Claudia, is there any way that you can call Donna? Do you have her cell number?
I'm calling her right now, but she's not picking up.
Okay.
Donna, Donna? Okay, she can't hear you. I can't hear you? Can you hear Donna?
No.
No, I can't. All right, I think I have to, Donna, I'm very sorry, but I think we're going to have to move forward here. Because as Karen said, we have two other hearings this evening. Would someone, Michael, did you want to speak?
I just, I just wanted to move.
I'm going to maybe leave and try to come back in. Can you guys hear me?
We can now, Donna. You want us to wait and you want to rejoin? Get out and then try and rejoin?
Sorry, Michael, let's, let's just give it a minute here.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, there's Donna again.
Any better?
Yeah.
Let's see.
Let's see.
Yeah?
Yeah, we can speak.
Do you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
All right.
Sorry.
The video, your video doesn't appear to be working and if you're speaking, we can't hear you.
I'm not speaking.
All right, now I can hear.
What do you want me to do? Okay.
Well, what do you?
I'm actually, you know, because I did this.
May work by Dolph.
All right, I think, Donna, that we're going to have to move forward here. The connection doesn't seem to be dependable. He hears sounds, I mean, I can't make out what you're saying.
Okay. I got it. Any better?
Well, I could hear any better. You want to try to say?
Yeah, no, I, I, I can't hear you either. All right, I'll, I'll leave and try to come back in through my phone, see if that's any better. All right, I'll leave and try to come back in through my phone, see if that's any better.
Now.
Yes, you can try to dial the phone number that is listed on your notice. There's a bunch of numbers that you can call in.
And then mute the computer, not your voice on your computer, so we can see your face.
I think she's gone. Not there anymore.
Okay.
We'll just give it another minute, Michael, and then we'll come back.
The other, the other, yeah, well, we need to take care of the vote, obviously, for this application, but 42 Chestnut is a D variance. That means it's in a minimum five votes. We need five affirmative votes. And since we have two members recusing, one absent, and if Donna's can't participate, then.
No, in this one, yeah, we have two that can't. You're right.
And I'm not sure if we're gonna have enough. We're not gonna have a sufficient number of members that could cast the required number of votes. I'm just counting again, so let me just see one.
Oh, so it's not good.
Wait, wait, wait. I may be wrong. One.
You're correct.
Two, three.
Yeah, five.
How many do we have? We have five.
Well, actually, no, Derek, wouldn't we? I think we would have five.
We would have five, yes.
And we just need to make sure when we get to that, we'll explain to the applicant again that that would mean everybody's got to vote yes.
Okay, so.
All right, so Donna's not back. Okay, so.
Maybe she is.
Is there someone who's just called in? I see a.
Where's that? I don't. Okay, I see the 908 number.
I'm having computer problems if you're trying to reach Jean Hendry.
Okay, Gina, we see you fine, Jean. You're okay. You're all right. No problem.
I think.
Trying to figure out what's going on with the board members, so.
I think, Karen, I think we're gonna have to move on.
Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry, Donna, if you can hear us. I think we're gonna have to move on. All right, Michael, did you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I thought Harlan had a motion, but maybe not. I don't know.
Well, who made it?
Yeah, I don't know.
Nobody.
I find Harlan made a motion.
Yeah.
Diane made a motion.
Okay. All right. So we need a second.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Claudia, now, wait, Karen, do you want to explain to the applicant what we're facing here with the number of board members?
Well, no, I think we're okay with this application because this application does not require that super majority of votes. These are all C variances, not D variances. So once we're done with this, we can explain to
Yeah, the.
Miss Hendry, and then we'll see if she wants to stay or if she wants to get continued, so.
I wouldn't mind hearing the motion because I didn't hear it the first time. In case there's something.
Well, there was a motion, there was a motion made by Mr. Tenenbaum for approval of the application.
A simple approval.
And then a second by Mr. Floyd.
Okay.
Okay. All right. And no discussion. Okay, Claudia, would you like to?
Good. I ask a question?
Yes.
Are you gonna have any conditions? The applicant, I thought, proposed to plant three trees.
Yeah, that's a good point. They did. And shrubs on their. I guess that was shown on the variance plan, Derek.
Was it shown on the plan?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
So that would be part of the approval.
That's right.
And then normally, there's the, you know, the board has conditions about the lighting fixtures and no spillage and confirmed, they don't contribute during, you know, no runoff to other properties. I mean, these are normally the standard conditions you do impose.
I'm familiar with them, their fault.
Okay, great. All right.
Okay, Claudia?
Wilson? Yes. David?
Yes.
Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thanks. Hey, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Appreciate the effort.
And we got good guidance from the board.
Okay. Okay. Our next hearing is case number Z 21-0471 193 193 South Harrison, block 11,000 001, lot 25. Is the applicant here and ready to speak?
Yes.
Okay.
Steve, do you want Derek to present his memo first?
Yes, please, if you would, Derek.
Thank you, Chairman. Nicola Knight is the owner and applicant of 193 South Harrison Street. It's located in the R5 zone in the former Princeton Township. She is seeking a C1 variance to permit the construction of a 13 by 20 parking space in exception to the required front yard, inside yard setbacks. The subject lot is not complying with respect to the required 21,780 square foot lot area. The existing is 3,850. It's not compliant with the required 100-foot lot width and lot frontage requirements. The existing is 25 feet. And the house itself is not complying with respect to the right side setback, the requirement's 15, the existing's 2.2 feet. And the left side setback requirement's 15 and the existing is zero. The applicant is proposing to construct a 13 by 20 parking space in the front yard. The property has no parking currently. The proposed parking space requires a variance from the required 25-foot setback. The proposed would be zero as well as the required three-foot side yard setback, and the proposal of that would be zero as well. The applicant is seeking consideration under the C1 criteria. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to address them.
I have one, Derek. If we, if, if this application is approved, what the, does the applicant have to go to anyone to get the curb cut approved?
Yes, sir, they'd have to request a curb cut opening from the engineering department.
Okay, all right. Okay.
Claudia, before we continue, I just want to confirm with you again that the noticing is in order, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, great. And now, Mrs. Knight, do you have an attorney or are you presenting the application yourself?
I'm presenting myself and I would like to share my screen to show one of my exhibits, if I may.
Absolutely. Let me just swear you in now. You swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful.
I do.
Thank you.
Could you increase your volume, Ms. Knight?
Yes, happy to do that. Let's see here. That is the maximum. Can you hear me?
Yep, yep, continue.
All right, thank you. I'm going to share my screen. This is listed as exhibit 1D. And it is the application that I submitted in April. And what I'd like to show you is that my husband and I, Carl Cusaro and myself, Nicola Knight, live at 193 South Harrison Street. We live between Western Way to the north and Faculty Road or Hartley Avenue to the south. What you see here is that there are 23 houses on our block. Only one of them does not have off-street parking, and that is our house right here. So what does it mean to park day and night on the street, on Harrison Street? It means that we've lost two cars, we've lost five side view mirrors, two rear windshield smashed, two fenders ripped off, countless scrapes and dents. And that's just our cars in this space here in front of our house. I've lived here for almost 25 years and I can tell you the traffic has just gotten worse. The road narrows a little bit here, cars are speeding down to Route 1, they suddenly have less space than they expect. This is very much a danger zone. Here are some details from the last couple of years. Front fender ripped off, this poor car destroyed. The second car was hit so hard that it shot over the curb and across the sidewalk and into our front yard. So as you can see, we do fear for our safety getting in and out of the car. This shows our actual lot. We live in a duplex, so this side of the house is ours. And we have a little front yard here and a little backyard there. But as you see, there's no driveway and no space for a driveway. However, many houses on our street in front of their house. And here are some examples. These are some of our neighbors on our block who have off-street parking in front of their house. We would like to do the same thing and put in a parking lot in the front. So this gives you some idea of what we would do. This brown space here is our neighbor's driveway. We would simply extend that driveway with the same paving stones and create a space here that would be 13 by 20 in order to make a 9 by 18 parking space. We'd leave an existing dogwood tree, we'd leave some lilac bushes down here to screen the car from the sidewalk. And by parking off the street, we would be able to have an electric vehicle. We would actually be able to run a power cord, which we can't do now, across the sidewalk. Here you see what what it looked like from the street in April when we made the application. Here is the neighbor's driveway. These are the paving stones that would be extended in this direction. There's a small stone wall here that we would move over underneath the dogwood tree to create the space. And we would talk to the engineering department about the curb cut here.
Is that, is that, right now, that little retaining wall, is that on the, on your property line or is it on your neighbor's property?
No, the property line actually goes a little way into this driveway.
Okay, so that wall is yours. Okay, thank you.
And here is my very non-PowerPoint-y attempt to do to do a picture of what it would look like with the extended driveway, with the paving stones matching all the way across. And then.
Excuse me, just to clarify, if you did this, and maybe it's just having trouble with the graphics, the curb cut would extend to the, would extend over also?
Yes, the curb cut will also extend.
Would move over. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And here is the survey. So here on this little box, you see the actual lot.
Yes, I see it.
25 feet across. So I've drawn a box to show you where on the lot it would go. This is a 20 by 13 box that would give us a 9 by 18 parking space with a buffer of four feet from the neighbor driveway and from the sidewalk. And we would extend the curb cut not by two feet, as I put in the application, but by more like five feet here to get it to match with the bottom of the driveway. So this is just a sketch of what it would look like. But what I'd like to do now is go back to slide six and show you that I believe when we are requesting a C1 hardship variance, it is exactly because of a lot like this, whereby a reason of exceptional narrowness, a specific piece of property, where the, the strict application of the zoning ordinances result in a peculiar and exceptional difficulty. Furthermore, the conditions at issue are unique to the particular lot and the conditions are not common to the neighborhood because we are the only house on the street without off-street parking. In addition, I would like to demonstrate the negative criteria that the variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without substantially impairing the intent and purpose of the zone plan and ordinances because so many of my neighbors already have off-street parking in front of their houses. I would also like to point out that the impervious coverage is currently at 27% of the allowance and that what we are planning to do here would only increase it to 31%. We are still well below the 61.5% permitted area of impervious coverage. So in closing, I would like you to consider three things. The first is that the strict application of the provisions of the ordinance will result in practical difficulties and unnecessary hardship as we have no other options than on-street parking and the continued danger to our vehicles and ourselves and to persons entering or exiting our vehicle. And second, that there are exceptional circumstances applicable to the property as it is, the only house on the block, without off-street parking in a driveway or back or front yard. And finally, according to New Jersey Municipal Land Use Law, there are the following benefits of deviation listed under A, to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in this state in a manner which will promote the public health and general welfare, and certainly by moving our vehicle and our persons out of harm's way from heavy street traffic. I believe we're definitely promoting public health. And then under I, to promote a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangement by extending the existing pavers of the neighbor's driveway to create a seamless space bordered by shrubs and a shade tree. And finally, N, to promote utilization of renewable energy resources by allowing us to swap out our fossil fuel vehicle for an electric vehicle, which is not possible unless we are able to park off the street. So thank you for your consideration.
I do have one question, which is, again, not on your presentation or even your request. Has your, have you, has your next door neighbor or does your next door neighbor park? Or your, does he park on the street or they park on the street?
My next door neighbor is sitting next to me. She does not park on the street. She parks in her driveway.
No, I'm talking about the house, the, the unit that's attached to yours.
No, they park on the street as well.
They do? Okay. All right, all right, just, just curious. Okay, thank you very much. Do you have anything else you want to add or any other witness or witness you might want to call?
Well, I was going to call on my neighbor whose driveway I would be extending. Her name is Bobby Parmette and she lives at 189 South Harrison Street. And she's here to say that she's fully on board with.
Well, maybe, maybe she can speak and she can be sworn in.
Yep. Okay, let's see. Can we take? Ms. Knight, if you stop sharing your screen, then we could. Yeah, let's see your neighbor now if she can.
Are you available? You're right there, you see?
Oh, yes.
There we go. Ma'am, could you give us your name again?
Yes, it's Barbara Parmette.
And your address, ma'am?
189 South Harrison Street, Princeton.
And we're just gonna ask you to swear affirm that your testimony this evening will be truthful.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, would you like to make a statement?
Yeah, I think that Nicola's proposal will most likely, more than likely, add to the aesthetic appeal of the property. I think her using the same pavers that I already have, which are which are, do not, there's no runoff from the driveway when it rains because it's, there's just sand in between the pavers. And I think, you know, I know that she is a fabulous gardener and I know that whatever she plants there is gonna look beautiful. So that's an exciting idea. Thank you.
Okay. That's it?
That's it.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Is there? Snipe, did you have anyone else who would like to speak?
No, I, I think I'm ready now. Thank you.
And you're, do you have anything you want to say before we open this up to public comment?
No, please go right ahead.
Okay. Okay. Do any board members, Michael, if you have a question?
Um, yeah. I noticed you're proposing the parking space right at the sidewalk line. Did you consider moving it back towards your house?
In fact, it has moved back towards the house.
Excuse me?
Let me come a little closer. It did, in fact, move back toward the house. It's twenty feet long to incorporate an eighteen-foot parking space. The car is not that long. So what I'm trying, what I'm trying to do is give the maximum space for the car to keep it away from the sidewalk and still retain some of the shrubbery between the car and the house.
How far would be the distance between the car and the house?
The front- It would be about six feet.
And then you have shrubbery up against the house?
Yes.
So, okay. Okay, so you'd have a small paved area in between the two, between the shrubbery and effectively the parking, the car?
There's some grass there, yes.
Okay. And the space then would be twenty feet? All right.
Twenty by thirty.
So basically, you'd have to walk on the grass, if you walked around or walk on the grass, to get to your sidewalk in the center?
No, because there is also a thin sidewalk from the central sidewalk stretching in either direction to the driveway on my neighbor's side and just like four or five feet in front of the house on the side of the other duplex.
Okay. All right. So then you have that paved, you have the shrubs, you have that small strip of paved area and then your new parking space?
Yes.
So, so effectively, and Michael, correct me if I'm wrong, you want to know how far back from the sidewalk the car will ultimately be? So it's not right at the sidewalk line?
Um, well, I asked it, actually, I was wondering how far from the house, which she answered. But my concern is that it might be too close, in my opinion, to the sidewalk. And the farther you move it to the house, and if shrubs have to come out, so be it. But that's just my opinion.
It will be-
How much-
Sorry, excuse me, Chairman. It will be farther from the sidewalk than it is now on the street.
I understand. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. So it's a twenty-foot paved area from the sidewalk towards their house?
Yes.
Okay. And a car is less. So you're gonna basically pull up as far as you can and still have access to that small paved area before your shrubbery.
Yeah.
So there should be several feet between the back of your car and the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Are there any other questions from the board?
Yes, I do have a question. It concerns backing out into Harrison traffic. And with the widening of the common area of that driveway, it seems to me that you and perhaps also your neighbor on occasion might be able to make a very narrow turn and emerge going front into Harrison in a more safe manner. So I'm wondering if that's possible? And I'm also wondering what other on that block who knows in parking, how they function in terms of backing out into the flood of South Harrison?
Yeah.
Traffic, yeah.
I have, I watched them. It's not, for some of them, it's not easy. But in fact, both my husband and I have practiced this, just standing in various places in the front lawn to see what we can see and when we can see it. And in fact, we do not believe it will be a problem. And I'm a very cautious driver, so I was worried about that. But I don't think it's gonna be a problem to back out. There's plenty of visibility along the sidewalk before you get to the street.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions of the applicant? Okay, so hearing, no more questions, I'll open the hearing up to the public. Eve, is there anyone who would like to speak on behalf of this application? You're muted, Eve.
I don't see anybody, but if anybody wants to raise their hand, clicking on that little symbol or it doesn't look like there's anybody in the panelists who we don't already know or expect to hear from shortly.
There are no hands.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, hearing no public comments, I'll close the public portion of the meeting and we can go into executive session. Comments from the board, motion, whatever?
I would like to compliment the applicant. My internet connection is unstable, so please bear with me if it doesn't go forward. It is such a pleasure to sit on this board and have somebody come prepared with a presentation, somebody who's read what they need to do, somebody who has given both positive and negative criteria. And I compliment the applicant and I hope that anybody else who's watching this going forward would recognize that this is a really great way of doing a presentation. And I happen to agree with what the applicant was saying. This is exactly why we have this variance. This house is about as non-conforming as anyone in all of Princeton, and that's saying a lot. So I'm very tempted. I'm concerned with both points raised about the proximity of the driveway to the sidewalk. And I'm also concerned about, while this applicant may be a good cautious driver, I'm concerned about what may happen in the future if this is there and somebody's backing out into a major, what's pretty much a major thoroughfare in town. Those two issues being said, I think that we would be doing a disservice if we did not allow this application to go forward.
Okay. Anyone else like to make a comment or a motion?
Eve, can Donna hear us? I'm just trying to figure out. I see your back. She's muted. You can hear, I see nodding yet. Donna, can you unmute yourself? Well, now we lost the video.
Yeah, can you hear me though, at least?
We can hear you, yes. Okay, all right, very good then, okay.
I don't know what, I'm so sorry about these problems.
Okay, well, then, then I was asking because that way then Claudia will include you on the roll call vote. That's why I was asking, so.
Great, thank you.
Good. Sorry about before, Donna. Okay, does someone want to make a motion in regards to this application? George?
This is Stein. I will move the applicant.
George, you can't because, no, wait a minute. Uh, I apologize. Wait a minute, George. You are the first alternate now, correct?
Yes.
And Donna is the second. Then I apologize to you, Donna. You won't be able to vote. One, two, three, four, that's correct. So, yes, George, you are correct. I'm, I apologize. Okay.
I'm definitely in favor of this application. I think it's going to improve safety and also the way it's been constructed will be a minimal detriment and I think will improve the aesthetics of the neighborhood. So I'm in favor of it and I move this motion.
I second.
Thank you. Okay, is there any more discussion of the motion? Okay, Claudia?
Coulson?
Yes.
Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Penumbra?
Harland, you're muted.
Harland? That's, yes, yes, yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Knight. Nice presentation.
Thank you very much. And I would like to thank Mr. Derek Bridger and Claudia Sabalos as well for all their help during this process.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to recuse myself from the next hearing as I was noticed. So I'm gonna turn the gavel over to Eve.
And I too will have to recuse myself for this one as well.
All right.
Madam Chair? Can we take a quick break for a second?
Sure. Should we take a five-minute break? Is that good?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
All right.
Derek, can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Can I stay and listen?
Yes, I believe so, yeah.
I can. Okay, thank you. I'll mute myself again.
Applicant? Is everyone back? We have thirty seconds. Yeah?
We're waiting on Donna.
Right. Okay. Our last case of the evening is forty-two Chestnut Street. That's case Z twenty-one dash zero five two. It's block thirty point oh one, lot twenty-one in the R four zone. Mr. Bridger, would you like to speak, to give us your report, please? And you're muted.
Thanks, thank you, Chairwoman. Yes, it's forty-two Chestnut. It's owned by Jean Hendry. She is seeking a D four floor area ratio variance to permit the construction of a screen porch in the rear of her house, an exception to the floor area ratio. The subject property is located in the R four zone in the former borough. And the subject lot is non-compliant. They required lot area six thousand square feet. The existing is five thousand four hundred and sixty-eight. And it's not complying with regard to lot width. The requirement's sixty and the existing is forty. The subject property is not complying with respect to floor area ratio. The maximum permitted in this zone is forty-three point five percent. The existing is fifty-one point two. And not compliant with the required eight-foot smaller side yard setback. The existing's two and a half feet. And it's not complying with the three-to-one height-to-setback ratio. The addition of the rear screen porch exceeds the permitted floor area ratio. The maximum permitted is forty-three and a half percent. That's a proportional FAR due to the undersized lot. The existing's fifty-one point two percent and the proposed will be fifty-four point one percent. And well, technically, a D variance. The normal way to, for a board to analyze floor area ratio is to demonstrate that the site can accommodate the problems associated with the increased floor area and not that the site is specifically suited for more intensive development. As the boards are aware, this does require five affirmative votes out of seven, the seven voting members. So I believe we have the bare minimum of five votes. And I'd like Karen speak to that with the applicant if she would like to address that. But that's my report. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to address it. Thank you.
Any questions from the board right now?
Thanks.
So anybody? No. Mr. Casey, could you address that issue of, just so that our applicant understands what, you know, how many of us there are and what the vote situation is, please? And I don't know if you're speaking, but you're muted, which has been my thing tonight, but-
There we go. I'm sorry, I muted myself. By my head count, we would have you, Ms. Coulson, Bernice Chen, Jim Davich, Michael Floyd, George Stein and Donna Dana as able to vote.
Okay, correct, good.
So that's one, two, three, four, that's six. So for Mrs. Hedry, who I know is here on the screen, you need five yes votes for this application. So sometimes applicants will say, well, then I want a full board. And I want to wait till you've got seven people. But you don't need to do that if you're comfortable in proceeding with the six tonight. If not, then I think we'd have to carry your application then to another meeting. We would take jurisdiction tonight. That means you don't have to notice again. But that we would have to hear it another night when we, and I think our problem's going to be that these are all the members. But no, I take that back. We have one member on vacation, Steve Schreiber. So when he comes back, then we would end up having seven members. I'm assuming Steve is not conflicted out. He's not within two hundred feet. No?
That's correct. He's not conflicted out.
So I don't know if that was helpful, Ms. Hedry. Where are you?
I'm right here.
Okay, great. Okay, great. I can hear you.
It's not a problem, and I'm ready to proceed. So if I can begin, swear me in, and let's go.
I will. Do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, absolutely. And thank you all for hearing this request tonight. I really appreciate it very much. And I should know, let you know that my background is in research, and so I'm very fact-oriented, and this will be a very fact-oriented presentation. And it's really interesting to me that you guys very much appreciated the fact that the last applicant talked about the positive and the negative. Well, that's exactly what I'm talking about tonight, so let's get started. I want to begin by outlining those issues that are important for this variance and addressing each one of them. So zoning variances are created, as you know, to protect the areas in which we live, to protect the general public, and to prevent overbuilding. The variance use is used to determine if the proposed use of an application is reasonable, and if it meets two basic criteria, one positive and one negative. The positive criteria is whether the site will accommodate the problems associated with the proposed permitted use with the larger floor area than permitted by the ordinance. The negative criteria is actually twofold. The first is to show that granting the variance is not detrimental to the public good, whether the variance would alter the essential character of the locality or threaten public health, safety, or welfare, and just will the application diminish the surrounding property values? And there are some neighbors from this particular, I didn't put that on the screen, by the way. I think Derek just did, or Claudia did.
Sorry.
That's okay. That's the back of my house, by the way. There are neighbors here this evening who can address some of this with you later on during the public comment period. But the second negative criteria that you have to pass essentially for granting a variance is to show that it will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zone ordinance, and this is what we're going to go through. We're going to begin with the first negative, negative criteria to show that the proposed porch will not alter the character of this neighborhood, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And we're going to do that by taking a close look at Chestnut Street. Chestnut Street is the, probably the most unusual tree street in that we have a stoplight right off of Nassau, right at the corner of Chestnut Street, or the beginning of Chestnut Street. We have a stoplight. We also have commercial buildings on both sides of Chestnut Street that border also on Nassau Street. If you turn down Chestnut Street from Nassau, you will see on the right side of Chestnut Street a restaurant, and behind that restaurant, directly on Chestnut Street, is a driveway to a parking lot for patrons. Staying on that same right side of Chestnut, there's a house after the restaurant, just a little teeny house. Next to that house is, is the fire station, the old fire station, which is a fairly huge structure, and the front of it, the entire front of it is just paved. There are no trees or anything. It's just paved. That's where the fire engines used to come out, of course. Next to that is a driveway, and that driveway for the fire station leads to parking in the back. Now flip over to the left side. There is a huge mixed-use commercial building bordering Chestnut and Nassau. And there's a plumbing business in there, plumbing and air conditioning. There's a liquor store, and there's a hair salon, and the door to the hair salon is actually on Chestnut Street because it angles that way. Abutting that huge building on Chestnut Street is a large two-story L-shaped apartment building. I don't know how many apartments are in there, but it's a fairly large building. Again, this is on Chestnut. The driveway occurs right next to that, and it goes from, and this is, this is a really difficult situation there, but anyway, it goes from Nassau Street through to Chestnut Street, and it's a one-way driveway from Nassau to Chestnut. So it is getting a lot of traffic from especially the plumbing company, Reddings, a lot of traffic through there, but also there's a parking lot there on that driveway. It's extended out somehow. I don't know exactly where the land is located, pretty much, I guess, behind the L of the apartment building. And there's a great deal of parking there, and it's listed as being for tenants and for the employees of those buildings. Now, if you walk up Chestnut, and all of the houses on Chestnut were built in around the eighteen nineties. If you, if you walk up Chestnut, you'll see all these wonderful, beautiful little houses. And if you turn right onto Spruce, in that very first block of Spruce, right after turning the corner from Chestnut, there is a large three-story apartment building, and there are ten apartments in that building. And there is also next to it a driveway to an area of paid parking, which can accommodate twenty-three cars. Okay, so you're on Spruce. You look over instead at, across the street, and there is the last house on Chestnut Street has a garage, and that garage is actually located on Spruce. It's very, very close to the sidewalk. And next to that garage is another parking lot. I don't know if it's paid or not. I don't know anything about it. I know that it can hold about ten cars. If you reverse on Spruce, just turn the opposite direction, walk across Chestnut, there are about two houses there before Moran starts. There is a house in the corner, and the next building is at sixty-three Moran, and it is either, it's a two-story L-shaped building. I don't know if it's a, an apartment building. I don't know if it's an office building. I don't know if it's the combination of the two. I don't know what it is, but it is a large building. It's got two driveways on the right-hand side. The driveway leads back to a parking lot, which is fairly decent-sized parking lot. So as I said, many of the houses on Chestnut were built in about the eighteen nineties, and it's a lovely street to walk down despite all the commercial. And when you do walk down it, you can see a number of visible structures just very much in sight with many of these houses. I count it nine, just walking along casually one day. I don't know what these structures are. They're not attached to the house. They look like, in many cases, garages. Maybe they're used for something else. I don't know. I don't know exactly what their function is. But there are an awful lot of buildings that are visible on Chestnut Street, which makes you think also that there are probably a lot of buildings that aren't so visible on Chestnut Street. So I got on Zillow. Zillow, I typed in every single address on Chestnut Street to see if I could find some descriptions of what's going on behind these buildings. And interestingly enough, some of them have a one-car garage, some of them have a two-car garage, some of them are attached, some of them are detached, and all this is really relevant, guys. This is really relevant to this porch we're going to be talking about in a minute. One house actually has not only a two-car garage, but it also has a cottage behind it, and that cottage is heated, is air-conditioned, and has running water. So, oh, and one of them, by the way, also has a screened-in porch, an actual screened-in porch. Around my house, the houses that surround forty-two Chestnut, there are many covered porches that are not visible, obviously, because they're in the backyards. Some of them are roofed, some of them are enclosed, and some have been enlarged and enclosed, again, none of which are visible from the street. So in conclusion, and with respect to this neighborhood, it's a hodgepodge. I mean, it's an eclectic neighborhood. It is not a pristine historical area at all with a stoplight in the commercial buildings and the fire station, and the parking lots, and the visible buildings and the invisible buildings in the back, and the back porch is not visible. It is kind of like a hodgepodge neighborhood. Clearly, adding a small screened porch over an existing patio will not alter the character of the neighborhood or be detrimental to the health, safety, or welfare of the neighborhood. And again, several neighbors are here tonight with me, and they can comment on this. But I do want to say one thing about this neighborhood. There is something that is incredibly detrimental to this neighborhood, and that is the stoplight in the commercial buildings and the apartment buildings and all the parking lots, because they generate enormous amounts of traffic. We have so many cars and so many trucks of all sizes and shapes going up and down Chestnut all the time, and other, a lot of just regular people traveling around who want to get onto Nassau Street, and it's easy to turn left on Nassau Street at a stoplight. So I guess that is really detrimental, and when you combine that with the speed at which these people are going down Chestnut Street, it's really a difficult situation. Anyway, I really digressed, did I not? All right, now let's look at the second negative criteria. Does the proposed screen porch substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and ordinance, and is it in keeping with accepted land use? Claudia, if you're still there somewhere, could you please put up the first page of the architect plans? I asked Claudia to do this because I have a new computer, and if I touch anything, weird things happen, so I didn't want to try to share a screen. The, oh, it went away, Claudia. While she's retrieving it, and I didn't touch my screen, by the way. I didn't do that. While she's retrieving that. Oh, there it is. Okay, good. Thank you, thank you, thank you. The lots on Chestnut, again, they were all, all these houses were built in the eighteen nineties, so the lots are really small. They're mostly within the five thousand square foot range, and mine, as Derek said, is five thousand four hundred and sixty-eight. So that's pretty much in the middle of that five thousand range, and six thousand is required. I guess that this is the way they did the lots in the eighteen nineties, and this is what we're faced with today, and this is what we have to live with. So this is, as you can see, it's a very long and narrow lot, and as Derek said, the width of it is only forty feet, and the required is sixty feet. It's completely, the backyard is completely fenced. So the top part of it is the house, the, the old house, the very most upper part is the old house, and then that rectangle that comes off of it is the newer portion of the house that was built prior to the existing floor area ratio regulations. It was built in ninety-nine or two thousand. And then if you continue to look down to, toward the bottom, you will see the outline of the screen porch, and you can see where the patio is right there. The yard is entirely fenced in with the six-foot fence, and in fact, what I have in my background here is a picture of my backyard, part of it anyway, and the six-foot fence. We have trees and shrubs all over the place, all of us do, to allow for a lot of privacy. And so that's, that's a real, really critical issue for this porch, I think. One thing I should mention about, I wish I had a pointer, but I don't. One thing I should mention about that back wall on that rectangle, on that modern area, it's all walls. The entire, the entirety of it is walls, and that's something we're going to come back to later on. But also that lower section right there of the addition, the added, I call it the rectangle, the added rectangle. The lower portion of that is the living room. That's the entire living room. And the only direct access to my backyard is through the glass doors on that glassed-in essential wall, essentially a wall. That's the only way you can get out into the, into the yard. So when you're in the living room, you open those French doors, of course, and then you step down onto a flagstone patio, and it's a semicircular flagstone patio. The proposed screen porch will be built over this patio, and it's going to follow its contours essentially. And it's, the whole situation is best described in the, in the email that we got from the Historic Preservation Office, and this is a quote. "The height of the new porch will be fifteen feet. The flagstone patio currently existing," and this is an error in the way it was written, "existing in the location where the porch is proposed." I think they meant to say "exists" in the location where the new porch is proposed. "The new porch will be constructed directly on top of the patio, and the patio will serve as the new porch flooring. The proposed addition is not expected to be visible to the public right of way. Therefore, the Historic Preservation Office has no objection to this application." Actually, the height of the porch is just under fourteen feet, just under that, and it drops down to just under eleven feet. Now, if you're looking toward the house from the patio area there at the bottom, on the, looking at the right side, there is a distance of ten feet and four inches from my fence line. If you're looking at the left side, from the patio to the fence line, there's a distance of twelve feet, nine inches. So in that, that portion of the house, there's a whole lot more distance between me and my neighbors on either side. The proposed screen porch, which is non-livable, has screens that will attach to those columns that you see coming down. It's a one-story structure located behind the house. It's a hundred and eighty-seven square feet with, as I said, a roof peak of less than fourteen feet. And architecturally, it was designed to try to combine the elements of the eighteen ninety-four portion of the house with this newer portion. We tried to make it blend in as best as we could and be a blend of the two, the two different, very, very different styles of this house. The only wall in the porch, for the porch, is obviously that windowed wall of the house. So the addition of the porch, which is built over the existing patio, is certainly in keeping with the area's zoning land use plan, and importantly, does not require any additional use of land. The patio already exists, and there will be no increase in previous coverage. Again, given that the houses on the street have garages, outbuildings, back porches, even cottages, the inclusion of this proposed porch does not impair the intent and purpose of the zoning plan for this neighborhood. Thank you, Claudia. We can take that down now if you want. So the question remaining for the negative criteria is, does it impair the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance, which refers to the FAR calculation? In most cases, the floor area ratio has been used to limit the intensity of land use. That's one of its major imports. And it's also important for controlling the size of development with, obviously, rules and guidelines to help keep that construction in check. But this is a special situation because the screen porch is going to be built over a patio that already exists, so there's no increase in the intensity of the land use. There is no expansion of the development of the lot. There is no increase that will exist beyond what the lot already is, what's currently already on it. No change in impervious coverage. The allowable FAR for this lot is forty-three point five percent, as Derek mentioned. The addition that was built on prior to FAR regulations and included, obviously, in retrospect, increased that number by seven point seven percent. And the proposed porch will increase that number to two point nine percent for a total of ten point six percent over the allowable amount. The addition of the porch increases the FAR by a not very significant number, and this FAR increase is about a space that is not livable. If the porch doesn't, does not increase the livable space, and if the porch will be over an existing structure, the patio, so that there's no increase in land use, it's unclear really how the increase in the FAR actually has any impact on this, but maybe I'm missing something. It's these kinds of considerations, though, that distinguish it, this variance, from other properties and variances, because it's an especially unusual situation. Granting this variance will not impair the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance in this area with its commercial buildings, its apartment buildings, and its parking lots. The positive criteria addresses if the site will accommodate the problems associated with proposed permitted use with a larger floor area ratio than permitted by the ordinance. Now, there are houses on Chestnut, oh, can't get that out. There are houses on Chestnut Street with back porches, and they're roofed and enclosed both. It depends. It just depends. This would only be one among them. It would, it would not be an aberration by any means, and it's very clear based on the number of porches that are already existing, that it has to be a permitted use. And the increase of the two point nine And the increase of the two point nine percent of the FAR doesn't impact the site accommodation at all. The patio always already, I can't talk anymore, the patio already exists on the site. The proposed porch will be built over it. The porch is only as large as the patio. In fact, it's slightly smaller than the patio. There is no additional land use required, so no change in the site or the impervious coverage. I know I've said this already before, it will not be in public view and the surrounding houses will be sheltered by all of the greenery around the house as well as the fence. So just to conclude, it seems that for this porch, the amount of land use is confined to the existing patio. So overall land use remains unchanged from what it is currently. So there are no problems associated with the proposed porch site and it can easily accommodate the porch. You know, it really seems that building a porch over an existing patio would be a really low key reasonable request. Would it be unreasonable to deny the variance? That's up to you guys. Now, there are a few other reasons that, that I want to talk about. Um, that would be very beneficial, reasons for, to reasons that are very beneficial for building this porch. The most important of them being the carbon footprint. I mentioned earlier the wall of windows in the back of the house, and that's a critical problem in this house. Because the sun in the summer shines in those windows all day long. It heats up the house so much. It, it's just amazing. According to P S E G, one window with the sun shining on it can heat your house up forty percent. Well, if that's the case, this wall really heats up the house. And I can tell you for a fact that it truly, truly does. But in addition to having the sun heating the house, we've got the issue where the sun shines on those flagstones on the, on the flagstone patio. And that heat radiates up into the house as well. The heat is totally excessive. During the heat of the day, when the temperature is about an eighty five, you can't even walk out there because if you do, you can't breathe. It is so hot. And I'm not exaggerating, I promise I'm not. It takes an awful lot of energy to cool a house with that kind of heat. And I'm not talking about cooling a house down to be cold. I'm not talking about cooling a house down very many degrees at all. I'm talking about at least making it comfortable so I can sit and work and have it not be so hot I can't breathe. And also, though, the, there's a converse problem in the winter. Because the wind blows so hard against those windows. The, the wind is actually, when the door hasn't been locked, it's blown so hard, it has popped the French doors open. And that, that has occurred on more than one occasion. So I always have to lock those doors to make sure they don't blow open. And again, in this situation, the amount of energy required to make the house comfortable is enormous. And it's not, again, it's not hot, it's not really warm. You can't be in my house in the winter without wearing a couple of layers. So that, that is just, I think, a really critical problem right now in this world. The carbon footprint could not be more important, especially in terms of, we're talking climate change and environment here. A porch would substantially reduce the amount of sun that is coming through those windows. And hitting the flagstones and reduce the amount of heat in this house. In addition, in the winter, it would serve as a windbreak. I've had screen porches before and they actually do serve as a pretty great windbreak. So all in all, it would really reduce the carbon footprint. Another reason that would be very helpful, but is not nearly as important as the carbon footprint is that. Most of the houses here have some sort of transitional area from the outdoors to the indoors. And um, that's what enclosed porches do. Um, and that's what roofed porches do, and that's what we have a lot of around here. It would certainly reduce tracking dirt, grass, leaves in the fall, all kinds of things back into the living room. So that would be really helpful. And lastly, um, and this is for me, actually, and for my friends. It would be wonderful to have an outdoor space that is usable, usable for three quarters of the year, to be able to gather with friends. And we are now in a COVID environment, that environment that looks like it's not going to go away for a while with the Delta. So having a place to be able to gather for most of the year, I think, is um something that is an important consideration. Because we're going to be living like this in the foreseeable future, I think, unfortunately. All right, I'm going to sum up. I'm sure that you are happy to hear that I'm actually going to sum up now. Both the positive and negative criteria have been met. The existing roof or enclosed back porches that exist here, along with various other structures like garages, a cottage. Are obviously a permitted use on Chestnut Street and in this neighborhood. So apparently there is a zoning plan and ordinance precedent for precedents for this. And because of such a precedent, the proposed porch will not substantially impair the existing intent and purpose of the zoning planning. And the zoning plan and, sorry, zoning ordinance, but rather it'll be in keeping with it. Because back porches and other structures, including commercial buildings, apartment buildings, parking lots, et cetera, are part of the Chestnut Street neighborhood. The proposed porch will in no way be detrimental to the character of the neighborhood, the public good, public health, safety or welfare, or impact property values. Any increase in the FAR resulting from this proposed screen porch will not create any site problems. The site already exists, the patio. It easily accommodates the proposed porch. An increase in the FAR will not impact that. There is no land development required beyond the confines of the house and existing patio and no changes in impervious coverage. It really can't be stressed enough that this is a unique special variance request. In most cases, when the variance is required, an additional structure is to be added to a site. Which requires development of additional land use, and this is not the case here. The site for the proposed porch already exists and there is no additional build out or no land development necessary. The porch does not increase the footprint of the house and the patio beyond what it already is. The amount of land on which the house and patio are built will remain the same. So finally, honestly, finally. The reduction of the carbon footprint resulting from the proposed porches is really a significant factor in today's warming climate worldwide. No, it's not going to be very impactful, but even little steps like this that I can take. In, in a cumulative sense, if we all can take, will make a big difference in our overall environment and for the future. So I hope you deem this variance request as reasonable and I hope you grant the variance. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Henry, do you have any other people who, other than neighbors? Do you have any experts or anyone else who might be?
I do not, I do not, no, just neighbors.
Okay, does anybody have, on the board have any questions at this time?
Yeah, I was wondering, uh, there's no uh lighting that's part of the porch project?
Yes, yes, it will have a light inside. And there's, there's already, yeah, in the, on the porch. But it doesn't have to. If that would prevent, if it means that not having any light will give me this porch, I'll be happy not to have any light, I'll use a flashlight.
Okay.
Someone else had a question?
Mr. Stein?
Yes, I, I do have a question. Um, with the increase in floor area ratio, would we be permitted, and I guess this is a question to Ms. Casey. Would we be permitted to have a condition that it remained a screened porch, not an enclosed porch or otherwise? Climate controlled and essentially an extra room? Can we put that sort of condition on, on the, on the approval?
Well, I, I just want to say before you answer, it's fine with me if you do that because I'm never going to enclose it, not ever. I want an open porch. You cannot have friends over inside. I want an open porch. So it's not an issue and I'm happy to have you put it on.
Thanks, but I mean, the point is, the variances run with the land.
Correct.
And so that would be an increase in floor area ratio without this condition would permit whoever owns that land to essentially add a room. If I understand it correctly, we have a condition like this.
Just say, the reason that it's screened is the reason there's an F A R variance. If it was open. It's, it's subject to a two hundred square foot exclusion from F A R, but we do count a screen porch as a enclosed porch or a room. So um, it's F A R either way.
No, I, I, I understand that, but my point is, it's one thing to have a screen porch counted as a room. And it's another to actually enclose it with windows and um, you know, heating and air conditioning. And essentially add to that the real square footage of the house. And if you have a condition that it remained a screened porch. Um, then it seems to me, you, you're, you're not affect, you're, you're just saying, let it be a porch and nothing else. And the question was, can we impose that as a condition?
Well, I mean, the applicant's already told you, that is what she's presenting to you and she has no problem with that. Um, so I think you can, and Derek, I guess the question would be, if a future owner came back to you now and said, I want to enclose it. Would that trigger more variances or, or would you say you, you don't need to do anything else?
I mean, unless the board puts a condition on um, the approval restricting the enclosure of the screen porch to more conditioned living space. I, it's F A R at this point, whether it's screen porch or a room, you know, and there's no distinction, so.
Well, I, I think since the applicant's indicated that that's fine with her, that's her intent, that's what she wants to do. I, I think the board could impose that condition if you want to.
Thanks, thanks for clarification.
Yep.
Any, I, I have a, I'm not sure how to form it into a question or a comment. I, I wonder, um, I wonder if, I, it seems to me like you were moving, you were definitely covering the, this patio. And I would say mitigating a lot of, you know, the heat gain from that, just because it's in the shade. Um, and I'm just wondering, I mean, you didn't say you were solving the problem of he, um, you know, hitting the back of the house. Um, but I'm, I'm imagining that you're kind of moving the problem farther to, to the back of your yard. Because it's still going to be hitting that back of the porch. Is there any kind of overhang that changes it somewhat? I mean, I, I, I know you didn't say you were making it go away because you, a way to do it would be to make that back, you know, enclosed. Um, or, you know, a, a wall.
There's going to be a little bit of, bit of an overhang. I don't know off the top of my head how great it's going to be, but I will tell you this. I had a screened in porch in my prior house in another state. And it did not have an overhang. And it, the sun just didn't even shine in it, it did not. And this was a southern, it was total southern location, so the sun was shining across it all day long, just like it is here. Although my location is in southern, I cannot figure out exactly why I have so much sun. At any rate, um, yeah, a porch like that, it really, really shades it so much. And remember, it's going to shade the flagstones as well.
No, I.
It's going to make a huge difference with, without having that radiating heat. You know, the sun, the sun coming through the windows and the sun coming through the heat combined, this, through the, the, the radiating heat combined really makes for a very difficult situation.
Any, anybody else have any question at this time before we open it to public comment? Okay. Um, I don't know who, maybe Claudia, you can help me. There are.
There's no, no hand there.
Right. There are. Six names in the attendee group, but I don't see anyone um asking to speak.
I wonder if they know that they should raise their hands.
Okay, here's somebody. Penelope Rollins.
Can we see her or? There she goes.
There she is.
There you are. Ms. Rollins, could you give us your address, please?
Yes, it's thirty nine Chestnut Street. So I live across the street from Jean.
And do you swear firm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
Uh, just to say that I did, Jean talked to me about the project and I did go over and look at the patio. And discuss it with her and look at the plans and it's, it's completely cloistered away from the sidewalk. Uh, nobody can see it except if you're in the property. And as she pointed out, it's actually hard to get into the property. So it looked completely unoffensive to me, in fact, quite attractive. I happen to love screened in porches. I have long had a fantasy of living in one, but it's not realistic. So I thought it was a very, very attractive project and not, not a problem at all.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, okay. I'm going to move Monica Newfeng. Would you unmute yourself and our attorney will swear you in?
I don't, do you see her? Because I don't see.
I am right there.
Oh, here you are. Um, ma'am, uh, could you give us your address first?
Forty four Chestnut.
All right, and do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Sure.
Thank you.
Hmm, I live next door. And so my backyard is adjacent to Jean's. And I don't have an issue with her putting on a screen porch. I don't know if that's what you're looking for.
Just looking for whatever it is that you want to say about it.
Yeah, I have no issue. I think it would be, um, actually, I think it would probably add to the house.
Okay, and Claudia, I'm sorry, um, Karen, it's, we see. Uh, we see a photograph, we don't actually see.
I think that's okay.
Okay.
Yeah, it's okay.
Yeah, no, it's, it's pretty late, so I'm probably not looking so great and this is.
Appreciate it.
Here you are. No problem.
So, yeah, my Zoom background, we had a meeting today, so.
It's fine.
I'm on a task force.
Thank you, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, we have somebody else, Mr. Ryder, is that right?
Hello, hello, everybody, can you hear me?
Yes.
Mr. Ryder, could you give us your address first?
Absolutely, yeah. My name's Sean Ryder. I live at thirty Chestnut Street, just a few doors up.
All right, and do you swear firm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
The truth and the whole truth.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I'd just like to say, um, you know, I, I can say that in, in the time that I've known your applicant. She's been a responsible uh member of this community. And just listening to her application this evening, I think it's pretty clear. Uh, she's taken into account the age, the design of the, the house that she lives in. Um, when she's looking at what she's, she's particularly proposing. Um, and, and I know that those neighbors that um. Uh, along the street are particularly grateful for that also. Um, she's cared for their property and she's maintained it in keeping with similar properties on the street. And I see no obvious reasons why her application shouldn't be approved this evening.
All right, thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this application?
It's Monica Newfeng again at forty four Chestnut. And I didn't real, like what Sean said is exactly what I would say. So if you need me to say, and I'm sorry I didn't, I've never done this before, that you should accept her application, by all means you should. And I live right next door, so I would know whether, I think I would be the actual only person that can say it would be a problem. It absolutely would not be, and I, I honestly, I think it's, it's surprising to me that, that it might even be an issue. So I think that's why probably it wasn't as beautifully spoken as Sean, but I echo everything he said.
Thanks, thanks very much. Do we have one other person, I believe?
Uh, Dolores.
Okay. Dolores, I don't. I don't, Berisha, is that Berisha? I probably said that wrong. Could you unmute?
Yes. So I'm used.
Yes, I can hear you. Can we see you? Could you?
How do I do that?
Not sure what kind of device you're working from, but if you can.
An iPad. Oh. Start video.
There you go.
Great.
Ms. Cher, could you give us your address first?
Fourteen Chestnut Street.
All right. And do you swear affirm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
Yes, of course it will.
Thank you.
I just want to say that I support the project totally. Ideally, I think everyone should have a back porch. And I would be very pleased that Jean had one too.
All right. Thank you. Do we have anyone else? There are a couple of more people in the attendee and maybe you're just listening in and that's fine. But if you would like to speak, if anyone else would like to speak, raise your click on the little hand signal sign there and we'll bring you in so you could speak. But I think we may have heard from everyone. So Ms. Henry, do you have any concluding remarks before we go into executive session among the board members?
I think I have wonderful, excuse me, sorry, I'm going horse. I think I have wonderful neighbors. I think that this is a really great neighborhood. I think that it it is a mishmash. I think that the porch is going to fit in very well with what exists already. And I think that's about it because I said everything probably five times already. So thank you. Thank you all.
Great. Thanks a lot. All right. Let's go into executive session. Does anyone have anything you want to say about this particular application before we vote on it? I'd say I think we've had two very well proposed applications tonight. It's a it has I think there are a lot of positives. I'm I'm favorable to it. I I had, I I wish that we could know, you know, kind of how much of a gain or an improvement it would be, but I I it seems to me that it would be an improvement as far as the carbon footprint and that's prob, that's that's a plus, although that's not that's not exactly our focus. I think our focus has to be mostly, you know, the ordinances as we are given them. But I feel positive about this application. I'd love to hear what other people think.
Yeah, I I can support it as well. And I I took a look. I see what where the lighting is proposed, just two wall sconces on the back of the house. I I can support it.
I'd like to support it with the proviso that this remains a screened porch.
Anybody else?
David, are you speaking?
I mute myself. Yeah, I said, I think it looks like it's a very nice looking porch. My my concerns are more just as a D variance, really kind of looking at the two things that need to be considered, the burden of proof and the special reasons. Although I think it looks very nice, she has an awning that does currently could provide her with some of that relief from the solar exposure. And, you know, I just so looking at just the two, the two points need to be overcome for for a D variance, I just, I don't quite really see them. So if someone else could chime in, I heard that some people have some support, but I'm just looking at the D variance request and trying to get over that hurdle.
Oh, Jim, I don't know if it's helpful, but as you see in Derek's memo, with this kind of a variance for F A R, the the issue is can the site accommodate the increase in floor area ratio? So I think, you know, what the applicant is arguing is she doesn't feel she's really, I mean, yes, technically it is being increased, but that it's the minimus increase and she's building it over an existing patio.
Correct.
And then the additional condition that was suggested, which the applicant says is all right with her, is that it remains as a screen porch, not a fully walled space. So I don't know if that makes a difference in terms of weighing the criteria.
Right. No, it does. It does. And the fact that the patio is already there looks like it would be cut back a little bit to accommodate the shape of the of the new patio, of the new porch covering. So, yeah, I mean, overall, I think it could it could handle it. I just, I guess I because it is an increase in the floor ratio, just in the bulk perspective, went to the backyard, could could handle the extra size and bulk. But I just was just looking at the the other components and felt that I wanted to hear a little bit more. So given what you said about Derek's memo and the fact there just it is not that much of a increase, I guess I could support it.
I thought I saw Mr. Bridger saying something, but I couldn't hear it. Okay. I did notice that I did, I had forgotten to say I had noticed that the awning and I I wondered about that as well. Obviously, there's a difference between an awning and something that's screened in, though, in terms of what we're looking at. Again, that's a different matter.
Of course, yeah.
Any any other comments, any other thoughts? If not, would someone like to make a motion?
Yeah, I would like to move the application with the condition that this remain a screened porch.
Someone like to second that? I'll second it. Are there any other conditions that anyone has thought of that we don't want to leave out? At this moment.
Second.
Okay. So Claudia, do you want to?
Who's second the motion?
I think we have.
Donna did.
Yeah, Donna.
Thanks. Okay. Mr. David?
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Ms. Ken?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Ms. Paulson?
Yes. Okay. I think we've done our work for tonight. I don't know. Anyone has anything to say before we conclude?
Can I say something? Can I say something?
Sure.
I just want to thank you all very much. I really, really appreciate the attention that you gave to this. Your concern for all the rules and regulations and I hope you now have a thorough understanding of Chestnut Street. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Enjoy your porch.
I will. I will. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Bye, everyone.
Bye.
Night.
Good night. So I guess I'll adjourn this meeting.
Thanks, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.